Would you please call the row?
Councilmember Wolcoxon.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Somerville.
Present.
Mayor Richardson.
Present.
Councilmember Morgan. Councilmember Simmons. Mr. Jones Chance.
Present.
The five present, there's a quorum.
Move to excuse of councilmembers Morgan and Simmons.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved in seconds that we excuse those that are absent. All in favor?
Aye.
Guys have your excuse. Agenda approval. Anyone have any changes, additions? Tractions? If not, may we have a motion for approval?
I will do approve the agenda.
Support. Is the move then supported to approve the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so agenda is approved as written. We're open now for public comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak to council? Okay, there's saying that there is none. There is. Mr. Rajabi, you'd like to address council?
Yes.
Please do so, thank you.
I was watching a documentary about animals. I saw this zebra being cut in pieces by a bunch of lionesses. And there was a herd of several hundred zebras just walking by. Those zebras could have easily stampede the lionesses to save the zebra, but they didn't. I don't know why. Maybe they were too stupid to know how much strength they had. Two weeks ago, I asked for a bike rack by the building, and still it is not there. I'm coming back in two weeks again, and if I don't see a bike rack there, I will sue the city. I don't have a car, I'm at five. Two weeks ago, the mayor said that he would call me back, or he would call me to discuss my concerns, and I never received that call. Two weeks ago, I got a letter from the city ordinance office. I had no intention of arguing with anybody when I went to the ordinance office, but all of a sudden, I found myself being interrogated by two ordinance officers. Out of frustration, I raised my voice. There comes Mr. Myers telling me he would have to ask me to leave if I don't calm down. I went to the city inspection office to take care of my business. I asked the new secretary, "May I make a suggestion?" I was appalled, appalled when she said, "No, you may not." I went to Mr. Myers to come to the inspection office. In the presence of the secretary, I told him what she had told me. And Mr. Myers said, "If you need information, she can give it to you, but she doesn't have to listen to your suggestions because she's working." Now, what is a suggestion? I says, "Never mind." Members of the city council, isn't listening to a taxpayer's suggestion part of the staff's work? Mr. Myers, I was a director of the University of Wisconsin, Oshkosh. I was also a director at Illinois State University. Let me give you a couple pieces of advice. Don't ever side with your staff in the presence of a taxpayer, and don't ever admonish a taxpayer in the presence of your staff. You should have said, "Mr. Rajabi, why don't you come into my office and let's discuss your problem to see if we can find a solution." Every single time that I have talked to Mr. Myers about an issue of my concern, without any hesitation, he sided with his staff. Come on, man, there are two sides to every coin. Here's my second piece of advice. You are not compelled to give answers to my concerns right away. Instead, you should say, "Mr. Rajabi, why don't you come into my office, and I will discuss this issue with you?" And also, one of the things that you can do is to talk to the staff member before giving me any answer, and then get back with me in a few days. I have the feeling that Mr. Myers has instructed his staff to hold up his guard against me.
Mr. Rajabi, Mr. Halinga held up his hand. I believe you're three minutes or up.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no one else in person that would like to make comment, we can go on to the attendees' list online. And the individual with their hand raised titled T. Doc, I'll allow them to speak now. You have three minutes to address council.
And what was the name, please?
It was T. Doc, I believe it's.
Hello, it's Trishae Duckworth. Hi, first say good evening to council. Just popped in tonight to talk about the agenda item to rename South Washington to Black Lives Matter Boulevard. And we hope that you strongly consider doing this as an attempt to further the conversation of uplifting black lives, especially in downtown Interlani. When you all so graciously approved the mural, it was stated that, you know, we wanted to ensure and make sure that this did not just represent to be words on the street. And we believe that in the changing of the name, it will help to amplify that message as well as bring programming into the area that uplifts black lives as well. So again, we strongly hope that you all strongly consider changing the name of the street to Black Lives Matter Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ford, appreciate that. Are there any others?
No other hands are raised on the attendees' list.
Alright, thank you. Alright, saying no others for public comment, we will move on to presentations. I'm sorry, was there a hand?
Public comment?
Yep. You need to wear a mask. There's some on the table out there, yep. We can go up here, Mr. Tucson.
Good evening, Louis. Call number L six five eight nine eight six one, Middle Drive, we're in the dark. Council have always been an opponent of police having every tool they need to do their job, even adding three officers to the department recently. Open we would get some product. Evident there is no product, but it has caused safety issues for the community. And you have not been told the truth. You have not been told the truth at all. Now, if this cop crew that we put in place, if this cop crew is disbanded because they are not conducive to what the city needs right now, if this cop crew is disbanded, then we can take a tool and put it into the detective department to do the work that needs to be done and there to bring those that has committed crimes against folks in our city to justice. Now, after all, we ask the older cops to stay over to train new cops that when the old cops leave, the new cops would be ready to run, hit the road. And that's what they are in there for in the detective department. But there's no help in there. There's no one to be trained. And if she leaves without someone being trained, our police department, our city, will be hit. So I'm asking you all, if it's disbanded, that's what could happen. Because as of now, there's no product that this thing is giving us. This cop crew, I'm sorry, I hate to call it a thing, but it's not giving us what we asked for. I would love to see the street sweeper come on the south end of the city and sweep the streets. I mean, I sweep in front of my own door, so I tell y'all, I sweep in front of y'all. So my, in front of my door was clean. I sweep it all the time. The sticks and things that's from the storm, they need to be picked up, and that's not happening. So when we see these things in our wards that's not being taken care of, then we need to holler about it. Congratulations to all of you all that has got your petitions and ready to roll for mayor council seat or whatever it is, but I want to serve your notice. In my city, I'm calling first, in my city, you have to do the right thing.
Tucson, thank you so much for coming. And we will speak to DES about the life and the street sweeper. Thank you. Are there any others for public comment? Okay, seeing none, before we have our... Well, I guess he's first. I'd like to welcome Mr. Kirk Prophet to our meeting this evening. Sorry to be chest to speak to you before we actually started. But Mr. Prophet has been the city's lobbyist for some time now and has always done a very fantastic job for us. So welcome to our meeting. We thank you, and we're have listening ears to hear what you have to tell us.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. It's been a while, obviously with COVID, all sorts of other things. Typically, we'd be before council several times a year, and it's been probably two years now since COVID, so I appreciate the opportunity to come back. Thank you. I do have with me tonight that we have a newer member since COVID with us on the GCSI team that works with city and some other folks that we work with. Let me introduce Desmond Miller, who's here tonight with us. You know, I tend to be the face of a lot of what we do in the city, but there's a team that works on your behalf, and Desmond is here tonight. Thanks for coming down with me, and I appreciate it.
Welcome, Desmond. Thank you. Good to see you.
Desmond hails from Flint, but he went to school at Eastern, and he's worked with a number of legislators in Lansing, both the House and Senate. I'm sure Councilmember Somerville is very familiar with Desmond as he worked with Senator Irwin for a period of time. But he's worked at the county, Detroit, and now he's with us. Maybe it's been a while, so I'll offer some perspective because, you know, we do pay attention to council, and I know that there's a lot of inputs coming. Our perspective, and of course, I think it's fair for me to talk about it because I grew up here, spent a long time living here in the city, and now, but grew up here. I think what council has been able to do through a number of years of distress, economic distress and otherwise, is you guys have managed well. I think it's important for some of us to say that, especially for those that are listening and offer a perspective that comes from the state and comes from the region. It's not always been easy. I mean, there's been moments in time where it wasn't clear how the revenues are going to match with even the most basic and modest of demands from your constituencies. And at least at the moment, you've got through all that to a point in time because of your good management. And obviously, you know, we all stand on the shoulders of many pain before us, but you're in charge now, and you've done a great job to the point now where I think financially, you're solvent, you're in good shape, you're able to do some things that we've only dreamed about for a number of years. So I congratulate, and I wanted to say that, at least from our perspective, how well you've done. You've got through some of those most difficult times, and obviously, there's difficult times ahead. But at the moment, I think you're in pretty good shape. From a Lansing perspective, and again, this is probably, especially with Councilmember Somerville, she could give this speech as well as anybody. But the reality is Lansing is constantly in this challenge of change and contentiousness and turmoil, and it's certainly not an easy place to try to work some magic. Indeed, this year with term limits, Senate Majority Leader is in his final year of service. The Chair of Appropriations in the Senate, same thing. Speaker of the House, same thing. Chair of Appropriations in the House, same thing. All of them will leave this year due to term limits. Some will move on to other legislative roles or other positions that they've filed for or will be applying for, but those four positions, those key leadership positions will all change this year because of term limits. In our area, more locally, obviously Representative Peterson, who has served, at least from my perspective, he's been a great teammate in so many things that we do with the city. He will leave this year because of term limits. Representative Lozinski, a little bit to our west, will leave because of term limits, the leader in the House. Representative Robbie, the co-leader in the House, will leave because of terminal limits. And we'll keep Representative Bravak, keep Senator Irwin. And so we have some continuity, but there's a lot of change. And with these redrawn districts, it's really created a lot of turmoil and a lot of challenge. The state itself is in really good shape financially as well. The state, historically, for the last 20 years, has hired right around about a $60 billion general or total spending effort under fiscal year. This year, it has roughly $73 billion, almost $12 billion more than has been typically the case over the last two decades. When I left from being elected in the late 90s, we were at about that $60 billion mark, and it didn't move for almost 20 years. Today, because of all kinds of factors, this year, the governor proposed a sickle that's about $73 billion spending effort. And there's all kinds of good stuff in there that many of us have been waiting for for a long time. On top of that, there was about $20 billion in additional money beyond the $73 billion that was proposed for the full year, and ARCA funds circled us from previous budgets, different things like that. So you're seeing, in addition to the $73 billion proposed budget by the governor, several supplemental budgets to spend that money. You've already seen one pass on infrastructure, which we're working closely with your staff to explore different options for the city, ways we can get in some of those spots. You've seen a proposal for behavioral health. You've seen a proposal for public safety. A more recent one on water stuff, a more recent one on COVID, a more recent one. Am I forgetting one of them? Well, several supplements that are working their way, that are signed by the governor, and there's still about $8 billion left available for supplemental by just beyond the $73 billion. So there's all kinds of opportunities, and it makes it really busy because you want to watch for all these opportunities, and you're afraid you're going to miss out. You always work and make sure that we get what we need here at home. As they work through the budgets now in terms of process, typically, what happens, of course, the subcommittee chairs and appropriations will work the process, pass bills back and forth between the House and Senate and get it into position for negotiation later in May after the revenue estimates. That's where we're at now. Part of the challenge with the appropriations process in the more recent years is the subcommittee chairs from the majority and the majority leader itself has more often used the subcommittee reports and recommendations more as aspirational for their caucus links. So while they matter, what really matters is when we get to negotiation with the target setting process after the revenue estimate comes in May. And what we can do in terms of those negotiations to make sure that we achieve our goals with respect to the projects that you're looking for. When, and feeding into that, of course, is all kinds of effort for tax relief and pension support. So we got a $73 billion budget. We got these $8 billion in additional funds. And feeding into that are certain members who want certain measures of tax relief. Indeed, the governor proposed, and I think it's a pretty good measure, to restore what we had one time in the earned income tax credit. She also talked about removing the tax that was imposed during Governor Snyder's tax reform that put the tax on the pension system, on pension recipients. In response to some of that, the majority caucuses have proposed income tax relief, business tax relief, sales tax relief, gas tax relief. All of this is feeding into this thing where there's only, at the end of the day, even though there's $73 billion plus eight left in supplementals, there's only so much money for tax relief and spending. So all that's going to feed into this negotiation after the revenue estimate that will figure out at some point by the middle of June, what are we going to do in terms of tax relief and what are we going to do in terms of spending? Now, these are great opportunities over the next 60 days to engage. And that's what you want to do, is be supremely engaged because, you know, sometimes it's the loudest, sometimes it's the last voice that gets their way. So if you're a fan of earned income tax relief, speak loudly. If you're a fan of making sure that we get Cross Street and finish Huron and Hamilton and do some things on Washna, speak loudly. If we're, you know, all these different things that we got going on locally that are so important, and we've waited for so long to finally get an opportunity. That opportunity is before us as we speak. This was... Maybe I'll stop there, but I should, before I stop, I should say this. You know, we've had a really good experience, and again, we haven't been here for a while, but I'd like to recognize some of the work of your staff. You know, Francis has been outstanding. We met recently with EMU because, to be honest, the whole fiasco with how EMU signed their letter of intent on business school was awkward, at least. And for me, it was symptomatic of a relationship that we need to do much better with, with EMU. So Francis and I have started with the president. We're going to work with Vicky and some of the others to make sure that we enhance and grow that relationship. So when we have issues like the business school, we deal with it in the context of a relationship, and it's not these two ships passing in the night, which was, obviously, didn't serve our purposes very well. I should also recognize Chris Jacobs and Francis, who have worked very well on a number of issues, and I think it's coming before you soon with respect to the freight house and some other cultural arts opportunities and hospitality type issues. We're working closely, and Bonnie and I had a good conversation today on infrastructure. We're going to get together and make sure we're well coordinated because there's so much going on, especially with infrastructure. So many people that are involved, obviously Representative Peterson have been immersed in the pedestrian pathway going across 94, which is resulting in traffic coming. By the way, on that issue, for example, with all that's going on in the economy, you've probably seen or heard that the initial bids at MDOT came in $2 million more than what was expected. We met with Paul Angel, who's just been outstanding to work with for decades. He and I had our first opportunity to work together back when I was staff member for Gary Owen, and we were working then on the pedestrian crossing, which still isn't right, at Cross and Huron. That's my first meeting with Paul, and he stayed right with it, and he's still working with us. But he committed, he's going to find a way, will find a way to deal with that $2 million gap between the bids and what was originally a budget for Huron, Hamilton, and going across 94. Let me stop there maybe because there's probably questions and comments. You know, you get one of these monologues going, and it's a little more awkward for listeners on TV and that sort of thing. So I don't know, Madam Mayor, if you want to have some give and take or some questions, or I should at least give Councilmember Somerville a chance to correct me or answer some things, because she's right, as immersed as the rest of us.
We can certainly, if you're willing to take a pause, we certainly can ask council if they have any comments or questions for you. Does anyone have anything for Mr. Prophet? Mr. Somerville?
I don't have any corrections. Shameless, one of your state senators has a belt to his head.
Could you pull your mic closer?
I don't have any corrections. He did mention earned income tax. That's something that your state senators are...
Anyone else, any questions or comments?
Maybe a couple more comments then, just on the money. Revenue sharing, as you know, was proposed by the governor, be 5% in the base and 5% one time, which is good compared to where we've been in terms of cuts under many previous governors. Fire protection grants, when we first started down that road with former Mayor Cheryl Farmer way back then, it was actually zeroed out at one point by Governor Engler. I think you should be close and work with your staff on this, but I think you should be close to about $900,000 now in fire protection grants annual, which obviously goes a long way in a city with this kind of a budget. I think you should still be protected on the personal property tax relief that was passed last several years. Those several items in terms of the money.
While you're looking, I do know that we got a portion of revenue sharing restored to be used over the last couple of years, but are you, you say, is the governor looking to completely make municipalities whole regarding revenue sharing?
No, I don't think so. I think revenue sharing, you know, obviously, has been around for a while. Revenue sharing goes literally, if you trace the history, way back to a point in time, 70, 80 years ago, when they first started to eliminate local revenue options and said, "Listen, locals, you get rid of these revenue options. We'll collect revenue at the state and we'll share revenue sharing a portion with you." It was started when they first imposed an income tax in the state and went through the elimination of personal property tax on personal items and went through a number of historically local revenue options that, over the time, this promise of revenue sharing has totally been forgotten. A lot of folks in Lansing look at it like it's a gift or a grant to you when it was your money. And you put that together with headling and prop A and all these other restrictions on your local revenue options. You know, we're at a pretty good moment at this moment in time in terms of your financial condition. But, you know, I'm still worried about where are we going in the future with local government finance because you're still, you still have all these restrictions. You're still constrained with certain revenue options. And soon to this bubble perhaps, or this bump in state revenues and local revenues and the economy probably returns to more normal condition, we're right back in the soup. So we need to continue to explore local government finance and find a much better way forward. So you do have, you couldn't control your own destiny. I mean, there's so much at the whim of state leadership, whether they're going to fully fund statutory revenue sharing. Obviously, with the constitutional revenue sharing, they have a choice. They, you have to get your constitutionally required portion of sales tax. And in statutory, it's discretionary, and you're supposed to get 23%, but it's probably in the neighborhood of 50% or something like that right now. So it's, and we can get into the weeds of members. As soon as you start talking about revenue sharing, it gets really intricate and detailed. But if some folks want to at some point, we can gather with you outside of this setting and just have to show you how it works and how you're short of.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Well, I was just going to say, I was not living here when revenue sharing first started. And I was here on a visit, because my home, I was back here, and I heard some people talking about it. And I thought it was, for me, it was one of the most idiotic things that I ever heard was that you're going to give your money, the control of your money, to somebody else so that they can give it back to you as they want to give it back? That just, it was unbelievable to me. And the way it's turned out, it's still unbelievable to me, but that's neither here nor there.
It's happened at so many occasions, you know, it's the same thing with fire protection grants. I mean, they said, we're going to put, the state says, "We want you to take care of the fire protection services for our state-owned facilities."
Right.
Then they quit paying. More recently, of course, and so far, it's worked out all right, but you don't know with term limits and the change in Lansing. You know, they said, "You give up your personal property tax. We'll create this local stabilization fund and give you what you would have otherwise received." You know, most people say it's protected, but it's only statutory protection. There's no constitutional protection to any of that stuff.
Mr. Wolcoxon?
I was thinking, I was questioning the 5% you were talking about, that the governor... I was thinking, I was questioning the the five percent you were talking about, that the the governor proposed for increasing revenue share. That takes that up to fifteen or that.
Uh it's five percent on the statutory piece, the constitutional piece is is just whatever it is. But it's five percent in of the statutory piece, whatever you got before, then one uh permanent in the base, so to speak, and five percent one time. I I I don't have your statutory revenue sharing piece in front of me, but you can probably do the math uh roughly, I mean, you have to extrapolate that five percent uh in the base and five percent one time, which is really it 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 doesn't, uh, I mean, it's so much better than what we've had, but as soon you do the math, you're going to say, wow, that's a whole lot of money. But it's so much better than going the other way. Uh so I do give the governor and uh your budget team some credit for at least recognizing that we need to be better and start to get back to full funding for revenue share.
Any other comments? Okay, back to you.
Uh I think that's where we're at, uh, you know, there's some legislation that we continue to watch that, uh, you know, I, you know, there's still efforts to try to figure out what to do with short-term rentals. Uh there's still a lot of activity regarding regarding transparency. Um so you walk through a lot of these different legislative pieces that we continue to watch. Uh the reality is it's hard for anybody to get a bill signed right now. Because the the contentiousness between the majorities in the in the legislature and the executive office. It's just difficult to find a space where they both agree on something that uh they have been able to do it in fairness on a couple of supplements. Uh supplemental supplies going forward, there should be a big behavioral health supplemental, that's a big item on a lot of people's agenda, there might be a public safety uh supplemental. Uh so you look at some of these things going forward, there will be some of those kind of opportunities. Um which you, and they would, they have to come to some agreement on the budget before, at least before September thirtieth, and you would expect them to do that probably in June some.
And thank you, Mr. Bauer has.
Mr. Profford, would you please explain the difference between statutory and constitutional?
Yeah, both are driven by sales tax, uh, there is, there is a uh uh and I'll tell you what, I'll get you a a document that that uh is pretty good.
What it was going with that is that the law says the county, the state has to pay certain money, but they don't do it, is that correct?
That's that's true on the statutory piece, because statutory piece is is an appropriation every year uh at at the discretion of legislature. One, basically, one, the previous legislature can't bind a future legislature to an annual appropriation. Um so the statutory only has, like I say, statutory protections. It it says we're supposed to get twenty-three percent of uh of 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 a piece of the sales tax. I mean, that's where it gets kind of uh tricky in the math, but it it's pretty explicit in statute, as cumbersome as it is. Uh the constitutional piece is uh we all worried for, uh at least collectively in Prop A. For that one, they can't touch, that's constitutional, but the other pieces just statutory.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no questions or comments, thank you so much for the job that you do for us. We know that you are always uh there, watching out for us and looking out for us and doing what is best for us. And we really appreciate, uh I know I feel comfortable knowing that you are there and watching out for us.
I mean, we're very fortunate, we have, we have, you know, Senator Irwin and you've got a council member on his staff. So we're very fortunate to have that kind of engagement, uh Ronnie has, uh you know, I I know sometimes folks uh have different approaches to different things, but Ronnie has, there's no more tireless advocate at the city than Ronnie.
That's true.
Uh, you know, for me, I get to represent the city I grew up in, and what better, you know, enjoyment can you have than that? So I'm pretty fortunate, I appreciate you.
We appreciate you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thanks for the report and um Desmond, it's good to see you, glad you're here and glad you're on, working on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Be welcome.
Have a good rest of your evening.
You as well.
Thank you. All right, thank you. All right, our next um presentation is DTE Tree Planting Project. Eureka, Vanya Hayes, is she?
She is not.
Is not, okay. Uh well, we will go on to resolutions, motions, and discussions. Where, who has resolution twenty-two-two zero eight four approving the minutes of April fifth, five, and twelve?
Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti at the minutes of April fifth and April twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, be approved and I so moved, of course.
It's been uh moved and supported uh to approve that motion to uh for the minutes, although um this is still a roll call, Mr. uh Alanga, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
The five yes and two absences, the motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-two-two dash zero eight five, I believe you have that, Mr. Wilcoxon, or is that Miss Somerville?
Resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash zero eight five approving appointments to boards and commissions. Uh resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that the home residents be appointed to the city of Ypsilanti boards and commissions as indicated below. Uh James Hupman, HTC, Delray Bird, HTC. And I so.
It's been moved and supported. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Five yes, this is the motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Uh, resolution twenty-two-two dash zero eight six approving ordinance thirteen-eight-eight.
Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas the city has an interest in protecting the health, safety, and welfare of the community. And whereas the city has a master plan and reflects policy goals of the city, including the guiding value that anyone, no matter what age or income, can find a place to call home in Ypsilanti. And whereas the applicant Lincoln Avenue Capital Management intends to provide public benefits in this development. And whereas the planning commission recommends the city council approve this planned unit development. And now therefore be resolved that Ypsilanti City Council adopt the ordinance entitled Lincoln Avenue Capital Management Planned Unit Development as amended on second and final reading. I so move.
It's been moved and supported, is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes, two abs, I'm sorry, five yes, two abs.
I thank him. All right, resolution twenty-two-two dash zero eight seven approving determination of old development agreements. Uh, Mr. Wilcoxon, that one you had. Thank you.
Uh, resolution to approve termination of old development agreements for eight forty-five, nine forty-five West Clark Road. It is resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, that whereas empty capital acquisition, well, see, we're being with the city to develop two big parcels of land in the city to it, eight forty-five and nine forty-five West Clark Road. And whereas there are two old development agreements on record from proposed development projects that never materialized that are cloud on the rec- record legal title that can have a negative effect on financing and whereas it is in the public interest to vote this vacant land in the city and termination of the old development agreements will encourage development and not have any adverse consequences to the cities. Now therefore, termination of the set agreements is approved and the mayor and clerk are authorized to sign the attached termination agreements for and on behalf of the city and I so move.
It's been moved and supported, any questions or comments? Discussion? Mr. Wilcox?
I'm just curious what those words were. That's before a lot of people.
Is this, is there someone here that can tell us? I don't know.
I think, I, Mr. Mark, can?
So the situation is that the title to real estate has to be in writing. And it's always recorded with the register of deeds office, and when someone buys property, they examine, or have someone examine the title in the records or the registered deeds. And on this particular title, two degree, two development agreements popped up uh many years ago, twenty, thirty, forty years ago, I have to look. And these were developer developments that were going to be done on the property. Um I think there were a couple of years apart. But it felt true, that yeah, these agreements were about the curb and uh street and curb and gutter and inter- infrastructure, but they never happened, and so there's, they are there. And the new developer, when he had the title checked, uh found those, they were asking that those be canceled. And so there's no problem for the city, and it will make the property more valuable to go ahead and cancel those. Exactly what the developments were, both of them were for residential property, but I don't have the details.
Thank you.
There's some one small thing to add, which is that these developer agreements were done through the plat process, which is something we would never, no one uses the plat process anymore at all. So that's what makes it even more bizarre, normally these things don't have to come back to you as a development sales, but because this was done through the plat process, it's required.
So is there a broken expiration date on proposals?
On the PUD or on this one?
Well, clearly not on this one.
Typically with like a PUD that we just approved, if they don't start work within a year, it becomes invalid. So, so we have figured out all of these things, just from the nineteen-sixties and seventies, when things were plotted, which takes about a two-year process and they also planted just like a square, not even a, it was bizarre, okay?
Thank you very much. Any other questions, comments? If not, Mr. Alanga, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Five yes and two absences, the motion carries.
Resolution twenty-two-two dash zero eight eight granting the honorary name change of South Washington between Michigan Avenue and Ferris Street. I believe you have that, Miss Somerville.
Resolution number twenty-two-two dash zero eight eight that is resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that whereas city council authorized Black Lives Matter Street mural on South Washington Street between Michigan Avenue and Ferris and whereas the mural was designed and installed and now exists, and whereas the city council desires to reinforce the mural with an honorary name for South Washington Street as Black Lives Matter Boulevard and whereas city council finds the honorary name right and proper. Now therefore, South Washington, South Washington Street between Michigan Avenue and Ferris Street is hereby granted the honorary name of Black Lives Matter Boulevard and and for their suitable Black Lives Matter Boulevard street signs shall be obtained by DPS and installed in addition to the existing street signs, some of them.
It's been moved and supported, any questions, discussion? Mr. Wilcox?
I just want to uh assure that this is not changing businesses mailing costs or anything.
Wait, more into the mic.
Uh that this isn't changing the business addresses on that street, it's the honorary title, the post office is still going to function, this this question came up, I'm bringing it up, so.
It will be honorary only and all business addresses will remain Washington, the official name will still be Washington.
Will we have that street sign, because they're on top of?
Yes, on top of, yeah, we've seen those around, yes, okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, Mr. Alanga, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries with five yes, two absences.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-two-two dash zero nine zero contracts approving twenty, number twenty-two fifty-six with the Michigan Department of Transportation for improvements to several of our streets. I'm sorry, I, I missed one, okay, yes. Resolution zero eight nine and um amending the fees of shared mobility devices.
Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas in twenty-nineteen, the city of Ypsilanti adopted ordinance number one-three-three-two regulating shared mobility devices incentive fee of one dollar per device per week. And whereas in twenty-twenty-one, the city processed its first franchise permit applications and discovered that administrative duties associated with regulating shared mobility devices and operators is more time-consuming than expected. And now therefore, for be it resolved that Ypsilanti City Council approves amending the fees for shared mobility devices from one dollar per device per week to one dollar per device per day. Additionally, city council hereby sets the income fee per device at five hundred dollars, and I so move.
It's been moved and supported, any questions or comment?
Yeah.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Is there a limit to the application fee that we can charge or be uh transferred to?
Is there anyone that can greet, can talk to us on this, I see Mr. Oh, Mr. Jacobs is on the screen, thank you.
Hey, good evening, council, uh it's good to be with you virtually. Um, I wrote the RFL and the resolution before you tonight, I can answer any questions. Um, I don't believe there's a cap on what you can set the fee, so, yeah.
Okay, then I would move to amend the initial application fee to be five hundred dollars. Yeah. I'm sorry, one thousand dollars.
I was gonna say, I thought it's five hundred.
I feel like I'm gonna get an answer, I'm gonna get an answer to my question.
Yeah.
Can I?
No, I don't know, it's two hundred dollars for the application fee right now.
Not to step on uh Mr. Jacobs' uh place, but even he did put in the RFL, this has been overly terrible for us to actually administer, terrible.
These are not small companies.
These are not small companies. And I, if you make the application fee whatever you want it to be, I can assure you the staff time that is put in more than covers the full decision. Um so if a thousand isn't enough, two thousand, I don't care. Uh because Christopher has put in more time, sorry, I'm pointing at you, Christopher, but you put in more time on this than anyone should. Um and it and it's been a pretty much a rough process.
I think in light of that, um I will withdraw my previous uh suggestion there. And then, yeah, I would move that the, you know, being that these are larger companies, I would move the determine uh application fee be five thousand dollars.
Support?
There is a support for the amended
Yes.
Uh, the amendment to this, um, is there any questions or discussion?
I have a lot of questions on this whole program.
Okay.
Was not ready to like vote on that, but there's, seems to be, like, how many different companies do we have? I I want to get a procedural thing here because I'm not talking about the specifically about the amendment that's been put in here, so can I still ask general questions about this?
Would they, would? My question would be, would your questions also have an uh effect on how you vote on the amendment?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
So, how many companies do you have contracted? I've only seen three. I I think Christopher assigned a hard time.
Yeah, I can't, I'm I'm like putting my ear to the computer here.
Sure, how many, how many contracts do we have? How many different companies do we have?
There was only one operating in twenty-twenty-one and there's an additional company in twenty-twenty-two, so there'll be two total and a maximum of three are permitted.
A maximum of three?
And and how many devices were with Bird?
Hundred. The maximum for any op, the maximum for any operator is a hundred, at different points, they had up to sixty-six, I think, but they intended to go up to a hundred. The maximum for any, the maximum for any operator is a hundred. At different points, they had up to sixty-six, I think, but they intended to go up to a hundred.
Cause I was trying to figure out the, the math on this and I came up with only six devices. If we had five hundred dollars revenue, then we were charging. A dollar a week, that's fifty-two dollars times divided by.
So there's an application fee.
So that's separate from.
Separate from, then there's a per vehicle fee. And then there's an impound fee.
So.
Right now or?
Yeah, no, let me try and explain this here. Um, they only operated from, you know, the end of twenty twenty-one. They didn't get a full calendar year. And so we're not talking about a full year's worth of revenue per dollar, per week. Um, and the reference to the amount of revenue only considers the device fee because there's not been an impound fee or an impound yet to date. And it does not include the one application fee from Bird in twenty twenty-one.
My calculations are that if we go a dollar per day. It's three hundred sixty-five dollars per device. They've got a hundred devices. This is a lot of cash.
Yeah.
So, the question is, is the amendment to add to that? Or is that going to change the, the rate that we're going to charge for device?
It would be, all of the rates would be combined. So that the issue we've had with these is, is, and I believe I've heard complaints from you, Councilmember Wilcoxon, we've heard complaints from Councilmember Somerville. As well, the mayor, in, in our city clerk so kindly calls them street trash, because that's what they've looked like. However. When, no, it's true though. It is true. Last winter, it was terrible. After Christopher went in and knocked some skulls. It's been much better this year. Much better. It's still not great. But it's been much better. However, if we update the fee, the annual fee, and we update the, the actual impound fee. That's going to make this so much better because they will have skin in the game. And by losing five hundred dollars every time a, a vehicle gets impounded, right now we can't impound a vehicle because we don't have a fee to charge.
Hmm, what is an impound fee for an automobile towing?
Could you repeat that, Steve?
What is the impound fee for an automobile when we tow it?
Uh, I don't know. I'm not involved in the automobile towing. Um, Andrew may know the fee schedule or Bonnie, if she's on the call.
Those are all done through the police department, so I'm uncertain of those fees. But I'd have to look at the contract.
I believe it's a per day fee, or this would be a one day.
A few years ago, it was a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
For day.
Yeah.
Okay.
What effect do you think this will have on, on uh, the, the?
They have on what?
The company's being here. Is this going to be prohibitive or are they just gonna say, to heck with you guys and take off or? I mean, this is a nice service for, for, for people to have, and I know that they cost an insane amount of money to, to rent. Twenty-five dollars for half a mile, you know, this is like.
Is it five dollars for half a mile?
Five dollars for half a mile. I rented one down at the, the farmer's market last year in. Evo Town and cost me five dollars. I mean, I didn't get out of Evo Town.
And we're charging them a dollar a week.
So the question is, are, you know, are they gonna pass it on to?
The, the fee is, the fee is by minute, not mile. So. While you're idling, while you're learning to ride the thing, so if you make it a mile and you get charged five dollars, it doesn't mean that mile is five dollars. It's the time you spend on the scooter. Um, is their pricing. I ha- I have all their pricing information and to the effect that this amendment would have. Um, I think it would limit the number of scooters. Ultimately, if every one of them had to make it to break even or better. It would eliminate scooters across the city and they just had fewer of them, which would, you know, have less around the street. And that was sort of the intent by changing it this way versus the application fee, which is an upfront cost, I think, would deter companies from coming here to try it altogether.
May I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, thank you. And I think, uh, thank you, Christopher. Thank you, mayor. I think Christopher. Has summed it up a little bit in, in his last, what he said last, because I had a question, um. You mentioned that it was two companies and we can have a maximum of three and each of those companies can have a hundred scooters. And I was wondering, like, like, the couple of questions, just for clarification, for, like, how did they get here? Like, like the companies, like, do they have to get permission? Do we allow them here? And like, are we attempting to dissuade companies from coming or are we trying to make it worth our while with the fees we're charging? Due to the struggle of having extra scooters around. So like, if we didn't want them, could we just not ask them to come or are we trying to limit them? Um, and I, that question is for Director Jacobs.
Yeah, so, um, Mr. Barr had the foresight when these first started popping up on the scene to adopt an ordinance years before we ever got an application. And so, um, the policy is that we have these franchise permits available. Um, and council at the time wanted to limit the number of operators to three and the number of total devices to a maximum of three hundred. And so it's not that we're trying to dissuade operators from coming here, it's that we're trying to limit and regulate the activities. So it doesn't impede pedestrian access, which was a major problem last year. And the fees are not designed to either incentivize nor dissuade companies from, um, operating here. It's meant. To cover the cost and the burden on staff time regulating that activity. And last year it didn't. And so that's why the fees are being amended as such.
The other thing that Christopher, uh, that, I think was kind of mentioned, but not fully is, we've done an analysis of the fees charged by every other community and. One of the problems with being the first in is you never know what to charge. And so because no other community had these ordinances, we were one of the first, Mr. Barr put in a fee that he thought was fair. Uh, we've, we've known that now every other community is charging this dollar per day. So that's not, that's a very standardized fee. But however charges, it's not the road charges, every community that has scooters is charging about a buck a day.
Yeah, that's producing one of the application fees.
I, I didn't get that, Steve.
Do, do you have uh, information on the application fees? I believe the answer is no, but I just know how much longer it's taken for us to, to handle these things.
Yeah, I don't think anybody has a five thousand dollar application fee. They're not quite that high.
Um, just, just a point of clarification, the dollar a day is only while these vehicles are deployed. If they're not on the streets, it's not a dollar a day. So it's not three hundred and sixty-five dollars per machine a year. It's only while they're out and they're only out when it's nice. So it is, it's, the rates are, are by year.
Thank you for that. Uh, Christopher, do you know what other municipalities are charging for the application fee?
I mean, I, I think it ranges from, you know, five hundred to a couple thousand dollars, but in my research here, I've never seen one at five thousand.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Wilcoxon, you said you had a lot of questions. Are you done?
Oh, I have gone through them.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or discussion? We do have an amendment on the, or. And that amendment was for the application fee fee to be five thousand dollars. Uh, can we have a vote on the amendment, please?
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
No.
Mayor Proton Brown?
No.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
No.
Motion fails with two yes and three no and two absent.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Morgan, did you call him?
This, he can't vote.
Can't vote, that's right. Right, thank you. Okay, so, uh, the amendment failed. I heard right.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there any discuss, more discussion or on the, um. Resolution as it is written?
Like a proposal amendment?
Okay.
Uh, increase the application fee to, um, two thousand dollars.
It's been moved and supported to amend the application fee to two thousand dollars. Any discussion? Mr. Jones Chance?
Yeah, what is the fear of a higher application fee?
What is the what of a higher application fee?
Uh, I was asking, uh, council here, what's the, what's? Yeah, what's the hesitation about a higher application fee? I think it would be prohibited. I, I don't know, I, but it seems possible hiding, so that's. And if we're charging them a dollar a day for these, that's, that's a.
Mayor Proten.
Yeah, that was my only, I think the, the five thousand seemed like a, a leap. Um, and if we are utilizing like, you know, neighboring communities as a baseline for the one dollar per day, I figure we can stay in the ballpark that other communities are utilizing. We don't know a sure number, um, of what the application fees are, but I, I just thought that, yeah, I don't want to prohibit them from being here. But I do think an increase is, is warranted.
Thank you. Mr. Barr?
At the beginning of the discussion, there was a question as to is there a limit? And the legal answer is yes. The law is that a municipality is not in the money-making business and when they set fees and so on. They have to have a reasonable relationship to the cost of the admin, uh, municipality of administering them. So the, the bold decision was a famous, it was a fairly famous decision in, in Michigan. Few years ago that set out that principle that's been in the law for a number of years. So there has to, with the fees that you set, there has to be some reasonable relationship to the cost to the municipality.
Thank you. Mr. Jones Chance?
Okay, I guess that all makes sense from what I understood, um, from Mr. Jacobs and, uh, Mr. Myers was that. Um, the amount of work and effort even for that five thousand dollars fee that I proposed earlier was also justified. Um, so, that's for the clarification though. Um, so I would, uh, like to add an amendment, um.
There's already an amendment on the table.
Yes, with, so, if I'm not mistaken, if we are, um, amending to add money, can we? Have multiple amendments for different dollar amounts on the floor at the same time?
There can only be one amendment on the floor at a time.
You could move to amend the amendment, if you wish.
Oh, I may have been misunderstanding, uh, Robert's rules. Um, I will leave it as is.
Mr. Wilcoxon?
I have a question for staff. That fifty to seventy hour estimate, that was for the first year. And what is the estimate for the administration of the program for the coming year?
Well, I, I anticipate it to be much lower. Because we are following the policy of impounding vehicles. Shared mobility devices that are improperly parked in the sidewalk areas. And so it's been communicated to both Bird and Spin, the operator who supplied in twenty twenty-two. Um, that there is no tolerance for this and that, um, this is a priority for the city because of the difficulty last year in regulating that activity. Um, and so simply, uh, they have three opportunities, um. To get it right. If we impound three of them, we can revoke the permit. And so there won't be a whole lot of work involved if, uh, they don't get it right. It'll just be three strikes and they're out. Um, last year, that was not something that we did. And so we ended up doing a lot, a lot more handholding about geo fencing, about. Um, the deployment and where exactly these would be located and, you know, the rules that regulate them. And their activity in the right of way or on streets. Um, and so I think getting it off the ground was a lot more labor intensive for staff. Um, but I can tell you already, since we've set this expectation, I'm not spending, um, nearly as much time. And, um, as some of the kinks in the application process that also required a lot of time have been ironed out. So I, I think we'll spend, um, half as much time on it this year.
Uh, what I'm looking for is a, is a, an annual hourly, um. You know, when, when you do four, you have to do it at the, at the rate of the lowest qualified person to perform that task, right? And so with that, I'm looking for a total number of hours annually for administering this program. And then multiplying that by whatever the, the hourly rate is.
But that, that's a difficult thing. Yeah, it's, it's an almost impossible task because they've not operated for an entire calendar year.
But you're thinking that it's going to be less than fifty hours per vendor?
Yeah, I, I do think that per vendor, this will be less labor intensive. But we don't have a track record of an entire calendar year seeing these deployed to make an educated guess to try and find a true cost estimate. I do think it'll be less because of the policies of impound and how there's just not a lot of gray area. And last year, there was a lot of gray area.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Yeah.
Um, I'm pardoning you, Councilwoman Wilcoxon, Councilman Wilcoxon, I, I, you can't see me, um. Um, so you did mention that, um. That the penalty is, is, is impounding three, three is the maximum in which can be impounded before, I guess the contract is nullified or before. Uh, it's like three, like three strikes, right?
Yep.
But I mean, the maximum is of these two companies is impounding six. Like if you impounded six, uh, that'll be kind of the end of it. So that's really strict and I appreciate, um, like you say, handholding, but hashing out. Where there weren't any parameters at first. So I can imagine it's kind of, um, getting it right. Um, so, um. I appreciate that, um, and, and you said something earlier and I don't know specifically what you meant when you said, um, I think Mr. Barr mentioned, um, three franchise permits. Now, is franchise with a type of entertainment? Is it specifically scooters? Like, what is a franchise permit?
Three operators of the electric scooters.
Okay, okay, cool.
And then I, I think, you know, i- if it helps council, we're going to reassess this fee annually. So questions like yours, Steve. Um, you know, this is kind of a moving target as we figure out, you know, what one, two, and three of these operators. Um, anywhere from partially to fully deployed takes in terms of staff time. I just know it was way out of whack last year and this is, um, the recommendations from staff are the best estimate we can provide to a true cost. Of what we think it'll be this year.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments on the amendment? All right, seeing that, Mr. Heleng, would you call the role on the amendment, please?
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Motion carries with five yes, two absence.
Thank you. Now, is there any more discussion on the resolution as presented? Okay, seeing then, would you call the role on the resolution, please?
On the resolution as amended, Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance? Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Motion carries with five yes, two absence.
Thank you. And that takes us to.
Can I just, do we get a, uh, an update on this, like, in the summer, when this could be more?
Absolutely, I can definitely provide.
Sure, yes, thank you. Right now, that brings us to resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero nine zero. And that's approving contract number twenty-two dash fifty fifty-six. With the Michigan Department of Transportation. I believe you have that, Mr. Wilcox.
Resolved by the council of the city of Ipsilanti, whereas funds have been programmed by the Michigan Department of Transportation. For improvements to Washington Avenue, Hamilton Street, Huron Street and Michigan Avenue, including a road by a novel rice cross of I ninety-four. And here on the street and whereas it is necessary to enter into a contract and, uh, for the implementation. And for the implementation of these projects, whereas this council had previously approved the contract for these improvements at its April fifth 2022 meeting. Whereas M dot has informed the city that said contract must be withdrawn due to significantly higher than anticipated costs. Now therefore be resolved that the city of Salani City Council rescinds this April fifth, 2022 approval of the Michigan Department of Transportation contract number twenty-two dash five zero five six, and now therefore be resolved that the city of Salani City Council approves the revised and updated Michigan Department of Transportation contract number twenty-two dash five zero five six. And that Mayor Lois Allen Richardson and City Clerk Andrew Linga are authorized to sign this contract subject to approval by its seat of term. And any change orders may be approved by the city manager to facilitate completion of this work. I assume.
Support. It's been moved into.
Evening, Council. I do just want to reiterate that the bids did come in pretty significantly high, 2.2 million dollars over the initial estimate, engineer's estimate. The city is being asked to contribute an additional $50,000 towards a grant match for the transportation benefits program grants that the city has been awarded for this project. It is my understanding actually that the state plans to incorporate a bond. Happy to answer any questions, ma'am.
Okay, who's going to put forth the bond?
It would be the state's bond.
You say what now?
The state.
The state? Right, I see Mr. Akers joined us. Mr. Akers, did you want to add to that?
I have nothing to add, just happy to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Mr. Wilcox.
I, I guess I missed this in the earlier round, but I, I think I find that the share of the township pays versus the share that you think is interesting. But it's our property, right? But.
It, it's partially due to the breakdown. So there are four, three or four projects included in this overall bid letting. So there's the Grove Road Bridge fencing. There is the road diet work and road repair. And then there's also the pedestrian bridge. And so the pedestrian bridge is the only piece that we share with the township. And so proportionally, it's a, it's a little bit different.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other hands or questions or comments, Mr. Lengal, would you call the role? Thank you, Ms. West.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries with five yes, two absent.
Thank you. And I'm not sure whether it's Mr. Somerville or Mayor Proken that has 2022 dash zero nine one.
Yes, I have that.
Would you read it, please?
Resolved by the Council of the City of Salani, whereas during the April fifth, 2022, City Council approved a resolution to sponsor a Juneteenth celebration in the amount of $5,000. Whereas since that time, the organizers have requested that the additional fees in the amount of $3,462 be waived. Now therefore be resolved that if Salani City Council approves a request for additional sponsorship in the amount of $3,462 of the 2022 Juneteenth celebration.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any questions or discussions? I have a question. Um, this would be sent a matter of waiving the fees that we would have and would have no cash going out. And I ask that because I, I, I'm hearing the city manager say, you know, as she said it many times, people think we have a lot of money, but we don't. So would this be simply a matter of waiving fees?
Yes, that's, that's correct. During the last council meeting, the council voted to approve a sponsorship of $5,000. This would just cover the additional fees owed. So this would would mean that the organization owns zero in fees.
But we would not mean any cash going out.
Yes, we would not be sending any cash to the organization.
Thank you. I do hear the sitting here. Mr. Jones Chance, I believe you have a comment.
Yeah, I think we had also discussed, well, we discussed the $5,000, but then there were all the fees. We had also discussed paying all the fees. And so I think this mostly just keeps us in line with what we had already decided.
Thank you. Mr. Wilcoxon, you have a puzzled look on your face.
I guess I'm not clear on that statement at all. I agreed to the $5,000 waiver. I didn't agree to anything else. So how does that, how does that come up?
Mr. Somerville?
During the discussion, I believe it was Mr. Jones Chance that actually brought up that the, the YPD fees are like artificially inflating the total cost because we didn't actually need to pay the therapy. So I guess I left the meeting assuming that they would not be lucky to bill, that we would actually be sponsoring near that end total. And it wasn't until the next day that I realized there were still remaining fees. Maybe I'm misinterpreting that conversation, but that's what I recall from last night.
I didn't quite understand it that way, but anyway. Yeah, so that's two of us that didn't hear, didn't understand. I'm glad I'm not the only one. I have no objection to this, but I just, yeah, want to make sure that, yes.
Would you have a moment? Councilmember Morgan would like to speak.
I'm just, just as a moment, just as a, as a correction on H, on that amendment, it says $3,426 and in the amendment, it says $3,462.
Yeah, let me double check.
You're saying that there's two different members on the.
I believe the, I believe the, there is a typo on the agenda, but let me.
They're both the same in the resolution.
Okay, thank you. All right, any more discussion? Mr. Wilcox?
There's another question. So now there's a question of whether the police fees are inflated. And you asked the question about, about cash going out. And so to me, like, we're talking about fees about a lot of things these days. And when we do the annual fee review, those fees are put in place because that's recouping the cost of staff time to administer these events, right? And that's the basis of that. So when we say we're waiving those fees, we're basically paying our staff to do those things, but not recouping the fees. So it's, it's still costing the city money to do this. And, you know, last week we had a conversation about, you know, our parks and you don't have any money because, you know, this could be adding up. So I'm going to vote in favor of this, but I want that to be clear that it's not just, there's an opportunity cost, you know, our staff are still performing services that are not being reimbursed by people who are benefiting. So we're giving support and time rather than cash. And I'd like clarification on the police fees thing.
Mr. Jones Chance.
Yeah, I, I see where Mr. Wilcoxon's coming from. You know, opportunity cost can be a funny thing. But sometimes there's actually no, there's no marginal difference. So yes, they're providing a service. However, we would have been paying them because for the most part, they're on salary a lot. So it's, it's not really paying them extra in the case of the fees, but we could be in the case of police overtime. So I'm with you on that. I would like to know if that number of officers is actually necessary. And I know we had discussed last time that sort of being the standard, a standard amount of personnel. And I think we should probably look at whether or not that's really needed or if we're just going to have some sort of on call while they're on patrol and they'll stop by every so often while they're out. You know, doing what they're already being paid to do, or if we're going to take, you know, one eighth of our police force and put them at these events for, over the weekend.
Okay, is there anyone that can answer that question? Mr. Lengal, can you help him with the answer to that? Or Mr. Barr?
I'm not certain of the, the procedures and how a police officer is deployed in this. I know that the, the special events fees are approved by council each year through the fee schedule. But that protocol would be for the city manager or the police chief on why they do that.
Thank you. This, that's Summerville.
Yeah, just kind of related to the last few comments made by Mr. Jones, I actually don't really think that we need present, like, we don't really need this, like, staff of police officers. I don't really see it as a need for this event. On call, I guess. I don't really think it's actually necessary for this event.
I just want to be in alignment, making sure whatever groups are coming to the city for money, regardless of whatever celebrations, that we maintain fairness and consistency. And, and regardless of perception, we don't want to make, I don't want to make it seem as if we're giving certain groups with certain, whatever, more than others, because I think we can fall victim to, um, looking like favoritism, depending on what groups we give more or less to. So we have some round numbers that we like to stick to, and, uh, and I think it's best that we do that.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Any other comments, questions? And I think maybe that what you just brought, Mr. Morgan, we need to maybe possibly have a discussion on that at another council meeting and make those decisions there. I certainly understand what you were saying. But seeing no more questions or comments on this resolution, would you please call the roles?
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Motion carries with five yes, two absent.
Thank you. Okay, next we have an added item on the agenda discussion regarding the city manager and city clerk evaluations.
Council, this was brought forward by Councilmember Simmons. It might make sense to delay this until the, the fifth. I don't know exactly where, where she'd like the discussion to go.
I do have some, some feedback from Councilmember Simmons. If we are intending to vote on this, I do think we should wait for the full body if possible, but I can give some feedback on the processes where we are now. Folks want to hear. So the intention honestly is to use the same documentation that we used in the previous year. It seemed to work well in tabulating the scores and getting feedback that is qualitative and quantitative. And so Councilmember Simmons is still willing to tabulate those numbers once we get them. And then the committee can meet together to make sure that the final evaluation is pulled together and then presented back to the mayor and council when that is complete. We, of course, need the rest of council to establish dates and deadlines for for them to be started and then to be submitted back to the committee. And so that was supposed to be a part of the discussion here as a body to talk about what our timeline is going to look like. And to make sure that everybody is still on board with using the tool that we used in the previous year.
Oh, Ms. Somerville?
Um, yeah, I guess in terms of timeline, I'm sorry, I guess in terms of timeline, I'm just wondering if we should try to do this. Well, I feel like it will overlap with budget. But I think it'd be nice to have the evaluations completely tabulated by the time we, like around the time that we're ready to approve our budget.
Okay. I'd like to say that before this was added to the agenda, the last, for the last couple of weeks, it has been very much on my heart and mind that we changed the committee. We've had the same committee doing this for the last two or three years. And I would like to change the committee and change other committees so that it's not always the same committee. I would like to name the committee this year to be, if they're willing to accept it, Mr. Wilcoxon, Mr. Joe, Brian Jones Chance, and Ms. Somerville. Ms. Somerville, your hand is up.
I would like to decline. I'm currently leading the IHAC committee for the Chutoni North Park project. And I don't really have an interest in me in my committee.
All right, thank you. Mr. Jones Chance and Mr. Wilcoxon, are you willing to serve on the, this committee?
I'm happy giving my individual evaluation. I mean, the, the, the the function of the committee is to tabulate all of this stuff. And, and I'm proud of the people doing that. I'm, I'm happy to do it too, but.
Well, it's not only to do the tabulation, but it's also to, you know, to look at the evaluation forms that would come to the, the council.
We all look at the forms, so I guess I don't.
Well, no, I meant to decide which, which forms would actually be presented to council to use. And I'm, I'm, you know, going on past, um, past experience with the, with this. I don't ever remember us using, council using the same committee over and over for, you know. And I do believe that we should switch council members for different committees at different times. So, but anyway. Uh, whose hand was up first, Ms. Somerville or Mayor Proten? Okay, Mayor Proten.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to repeat at the beginning of the statement that I gave was to ask council if they were comfortable with the form that has already been utilized previously. And if there were changes, that was supposed to be a part of this discussion here tonight, if you wanted to change anything. The other piece of it, I guess, is just, um, is it, is that protocol that we can just, like, be told that we're not going to be the representatives anymore and then ask other people to take over, or this council get to make a decision as a whole?
My experience in past, with past councils has been that, the mayor, and certainly I was not the mayor, that the mayor appointed the committees for for the evaluations. And Mr. Barr can correct me if I'm wrong there, but that has been, that was the standard procedure that I have been, since I've been on council. And we never had the same, generally, we never had the same committee that did it for two or three years in a row. And that's, that's all.
I would just say.
It's just to give other people an opportunity.
In my time on council, I think folks didn't want to do it anymore in the two times that I've been here. And so that's when, when it changed. But also some of us have been working on this already. And so if we maybe would have made a different decision of what to start on, if we knew that there was going to be a proposed change. So I can't speak for Mr. Morgan, but I do know in conversation with Councilmember Simmons and myself, we were prepared, prepared and willing to continue serving this capacity to pull things together and tabulate.
And I didn't know that you two were already working on that. Okay, Ms. Somerville?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to move that council continue using the same process that we used in the previous years to keep Councilmember Morgan, Councilmember Simmons, and Mayor Tom Brown as the committee in charge of the evaluation forms that council will be using. And I would like to keep the same forms that we've used in the past.
It's been moved and supported that this council maintains the same committee for the, for the city manager and city clerk evaluations, and that we use the same forms as used before. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Basically now, Mr. Lengal, would you call the role?
Okay, Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries with five yes, two absences.
Thank you. Okay, boards and commissions and nominations, they are there for your reading. Any discussion on these? Mr. Wilcox.
I just wanted to address Commissioner Gibbons.
Uh, I just wanted to uh address uh Commissioner Gibbons um for this sustainability commission, she's been on a. Commission for the last three years, um, at the last meeting, I was gonna bring this up in the in the update or my report. Um, she was voted to chair that commission, um, I think she'll do an excellent job. Um, you know, there was a a handoff from Keith Michaelowski to to Beth Gibbons, and I think she did an excellent job. I will note that she is not a resident of the city. Um, but she has expertise, you know, the 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 caveat is she has very specific expertise that that is. Um, very valuable to this uh commission, and she has excellent um. Communication skills, so having her be chair is is appropriate as well, so.
That's right, thank you. And we're not voting on these tonight, but if there's any other discussion or you know, comments if anyone has about another um. Commission that's nominated, please.
He was just asking who had nominated Tyler Weston for the.
He was asking. What was that now?
Who who had nominated Tyler Weston for the Bicentennial Committee on Energy?
Oh, right, I do, yes. Thank you, anything?
Uh, I I nominated them.
Well, it sounds like he will definitely be approved at the next meeting when we vote on it, thank you. Okay, boards and uh commissions communications, uh, police advisory, commission annual report. Uh, Mr. Heleng, who was to give that?
It's just on here as a communication for council to review.
All right, thank you. Uh, liaison reports, police advisor, Mr. Morgan, do you have anything for us? Mr. Morgan?
I I have no, I have I have, oh, for the uh liaison reports, no, we have a a white pack uh meeting coming up. Thursday, I believe. Um, and and I think the, I think the annual report was in the um, was in the that the packet.
Yes. Uh, human relations commission?
Um, they were unable to meet forums, so the meetings did not commence.
As George resigned.
His term ends at the end of this month and he does not wish to seek reappointment.
Our commission?
Nothing to report.
Thank you, Parks and Recreation?
Parks and Recreation, uh. They reported on uh M Parks Community Service Awards for the last couple of years, we haven't been able to do that, um, there's I think six awards that have been. Um, sent to Evan Sweet using the process of reframing, because all the frames were, but um, wondering about the best way to present these to people. Um, and we discussed previously having a presentation during the morning council meetings. Um, and I think uh one of these is going cautiously to Pete Murdock. So if we could find that with the uh the bench that we talked about, that would be great, um, that's coming up. Um, they want to get a word in the saying later about that, um. What else, the Michigan Active Communities Grants, um, staff and uh. Folks from the commission and from uh here on our watershed council, um, met to uh. Just ca- discuss this grant, Bonnie has submitted a rough description of what the project will be, this is all about getting access to the river through the um. Through the city limits, um, and Bonnie can probably get more details about that, but um, you know, things like access to the river, um. Making accessibility to the gazebo, um, there's no pay to that, so it's not accessible, accessible. Um, uh, some some issues with with Spring Street and then uh sponsoring a Fall River Day. Um, which has been in conjunction with the groundwater partnership council. So okay, I can move on to sustainability commission, um. Uh, as I said, newly elected Chair Beth Gibbons, uh Vice Chair uh was up as well. Um, and they decided because there were two commissioners absent from that meeting that they would uh hold it over because the current Vice Chair was was absent from the meeting. So that will happen at the next meeting. Um, there's a presentation by U of M students on resilient stuffs. Um, this is a project that's been going on for a couple of years, um, there's two different cohorts, this is the second cohort of students that have been working on this. The first uh cohort, we're looking at having, um, you know, breaking mortar places where uh, you know, people will be going in case of emergency. Um, this is, this part of the project is switching over to uh focusing on networking rather than. And it's basically built kills with an expand on our our emergency net. We're in line to get gold level rating for green communities through the state.
All right, thank you. Okay, historic district commission, Ashley Business, uh Simmons and she's. Planning Commission?
Planning Commission meets tomorrow and um I am sure I will have a lot of, a lot to report at our next meeting.
Thank you, zoning board of appeals?
No, that's me, I I don't I don't think it's not. I I don't think it meets again for another, so later this quarter, if it meets.
Okay, thank you, liaison reports, Stink Cox, Stink Cox is coming up. Uh, not this weekend, but next on the twenty ninth, so. Hey, uh, Washington Area Transportation Studies and Simmons, um, Urban County. Uh, I wasn't able to attend the last meeting, Mr. uh Jacobs or Myers. Were you able to attend?
Uh, yeah, I filled in and I think you got there before any actions were taken, Mayor Lois.
And there were no actions taken, I mean, right after I got there, they they uh. Adjourned the meeting, so there wasn't any before, okay, thank you. Uh, it's like downtown development authority, Mr. Jacobs.
Um, we have a meeting on Thursday, we're gonna finalize some decisions about movies. Dumpster murals downtown and uh the Riverside Art Center sale is very close to being completed. Um, so we're passing a resolution to finalize that and um they're ready to pass, so cool things happening.
Thank you, and last but not least, friends of the circle, Mr. Wilcox.
Um, they're moving along towards opening uh the Friday memorial there and uh to that end, they'll be meeting with um. New HR person uh to get staff hired and post a post a position, there's a workday this Saturday and next Saturday. Um, to do some landscaping inside the fence, um, and put up new shade, um, things as well, so uh they've got two grants. Um, it's one from Metro Parks and one from. They got two grants for for funding for um uh, so one was twenty-five thousand dollars from the uh, from. Metro Parks and there was another twenty thousand dollar grants, and so it's a bit of overkill, so they're trying to figure out if they can and use those dollars for something else. Um, from one of the two lenders, so. Like everything's looking pretty good, uh, it won't be adhering to some of the uh. They're not gonna hire somebody to sit up front and do that, and they may relax their spacing issue.
So they won't be taking temperatures or any of that?
Not at this time, that's not.
All right, um. A council proposed business, Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you.
I recall this, I uh I tried to write down the whole number that Mr. Tucson gave us where the light is out. I got the first few numbers, but not all of them, so I'll follow up to get the rest of those so we can figure out what's going on, because I have heard from. A few residents that there have been like um flickering lights, kind of like brownout situations over in the indoor circle um since. A tree took down a wire after that windstorm that we had uh last week. Um, and then also, I just, um, this is like my soapbox, so since we have a little time, since we're we're going to break tonight. Um, and thinking about the conversations that we've been having about, um, you know, waiving fees, sponsorship for organizations and events. I would be remiss if I don't like put it out there that I think it's our responsibility as a council and as leadership to. Keep in mind what um equality versus equity really is. And that, you know, equality is giving the same thing to everyone, while equity means giving the same resources in this instance allocations. That are necessary um for individuals based on their circumstance to bring them to being equal, right? And so we know that um there are, you know, disenfranchised communities um that we are here to represent. We're here to represent everyone, and while I don't believe in being physically irresponsible, um, I do think we have to. Keep in consideration how we spend our money, how we allocate funds and the budget and the bottom line. I think it's important to remember that our responsibility also is to equity for all and to move away from equality for all. Um, because we're also doing a big disservice to folks if we go from that lens, and so. That is how I'm often looking at the decisions that we're making from an equity lens, not always an equality lens, even though there are moments where that might be important. Um, and so I just, you know, I just say that to say, um, as a reminder, I mean, I try to keep it at the forefront of my thoughts when we're making decisions. That equality and equity are very different, and if we mean to be an equitable community, we need to keep that in mind uh when making decisions while also being business responsible. Uh, that's all for tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, uh, Mr. Jones Chance?
Um, yes, I uh apparently there was an oversight when we uh. Last voted, uh, I'm guessing it was me on uh putting speed bumps on Second Avenue. And I think we stipulated a certain area and uh we forgot about a pretty significant straightaway coming from. Um, Monroe to Watland and um. Yeah, I would actually like to correct that now and uh put a motion on the table that we uh. Extend the the addition of speed bumps to uh Watland on Second Avenue.
Support. This been moved in second to uh extend the speed bumps on uh Second Avenue between Monroe and Watland. Um, any other questions about that?
I was confused to not see them go all the way down when I went down second, so.
Yeah, that might have just been uh a result of me making the motion last time.
I have no, I I do know that the um, I do recall that the petition did say from Michigan, from Michigan to Watland. So I just thought it was uh an oversight, but I cer- certainly agree, and living down uh. Block from Watland, I know that the speeding there on uh Second, once they cross that last speed, it's like. Let me go as fast as I can to get to the curb of that one, uh, it's.
Where's the last one now?
It said just before Monroe, right? Yeah, so there's. There's actually three blocks between Monroe and Watland. Seeing that, any other questions or discussion with seeing that, Mr. Heleng, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Will Coxon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Motion carries with five yes, two absence.
And uh, I do want to ask what those, those will be done this season, right? I don't know what uh. Ability, capacity, number of.
Mr. Akers, can you answer that question?
So we'll we'll work on ordering them uh before the end of the week, I with. All the shortages that are going on, I'm not sure how long it's gonna take for them to arrive, um, but they should be in. You know, before, I I would assume that at least they'd be in by midsummer. So we'll we'll order them, I can give you an updated timeline once we, once we talk to our vendor and see how long it's gonna take to get them shipped.
Thanks.
Thank you, anything else?
Uh, that's all for me.
All right, thank you, okay, Miss Somerville?
Uh, I would just like to remind everybody that Thursday's coming up on Friday, I hope you get outside and do something good for the planet. Um, there are two opportunities that I'm aware of in the city this weekend to clean up the community, um. One is the Prospect Park cleanup that I'm hosting from eleven to three on Saturday, it's supposed to be very nice out. And it's supposed to be even nicer on Sunday, and um a number of people have kind of got together to host a downtown cleanup day. Um, I believe it's the downtown business owners, um. Game Above was on the list, or a few people on the list, and they're all not coming to here right now, but um. It looks like a few different organizations are getting together to host the one on Sunday from eleven to three, so both days, eleven to three. I believe both days were in the mid to upper seventies and sunshine, so um. Hope to see people there picking up trash, because there's lots of trash.
Okay, you're saying both days, so one is Saturday and one Sunday, isn't it?
Yeah, so Saturday, um, the Prospect Park cleanup, uh, I will be hosting and with all the people coming to help clean up the park. Uh, that is also in honor of Pete Murdock and Grace Sweeney. Um, and then the Saturday one is the downtown businesses are hosting cleanup downtown under, they named it a beautify Ipsy.
That's on Sunday?
Yes, yeah, both days, eleven to three.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Mr. Wilcox?
Uh, just want to remind people that April twenty seventh is the town hall for um ten day removal. Um, there will be presentation by uh Limotex and here on our watershed council and uh Summer Woods from the. With lots connection to the facilitation of the past meeting, we will be facilitating this meeting as well, um. Uh, the last uh CBO meeting for the development uh heart road is this Thursday. At seven o'clock, um, we anticipate, well, the plan is to have. Language that can be passed to the city attorney's office to draw up that agreement that will come before council, um. At the next meeting, there is a uh a deadline for the developer who was here earlier, Kyle Brasher. Um, uh, for next month in that uh, there's. Money to the to the landowner uh will become um non-repayable. In May, um, they have, we have two delays um in this process that cost the two bucks. So we're now up against that, so we're gonna be fine to them, um, that should be coming to council. Um, before that, so look for that agreement um in one of the meetings in May.
Thank you, uh, now where will these be held?
The CBO meeting?
Well, the CBO and the town hall.
CBO meeting is here on Thursday, um, and the town hall is at the Friday of some point seven. And that is, that is an in-person meeting on the twenty seventh, it's not a hybrid meeting.
Okay. Both of those questions were so they could be. Put in the records for people that will go back and listen. All right, um, communications from me, uh, could we please add note, I remember. Uh, at one time, it seems that we did have bike racks out front.
There's two on Michigan there.
There's two on this. Right outside the building here, okay, okay, I wasn't sure, I do know that we did have some, so uh. We can, well, next time we will let him know that they are.
I was going to, but I would.
Yeah, because they are, they say they, that they are not outside the door here, but they're on the cusp on the outside on Michigan, thank you. All right, um, the other thing is Mr. Akers, um, I know we, I've had many asked questions about the. Uh, street sweeper, uh, coming up, and we had some. Uh, comments, there was a comment tonight about the sweet street sweeper and also about picking up the limbs that. Uh, we had some terrible, terrible winds that have blown down limbs and things all over. So is there any movement towards getting those limbs picked up and the street sweeper, when, when is the schedule for that?
So we had a crew out on Saturday, they removed um large branches from that area, it's off of, I believe it was Middle Drive. So we had, uh, a crew out on Saturday. They removed, um, large branches from that area. It's off of, I believe it was Middle Drive. Um, so I I will, we'll go out and take a look at it tomorrow. Make sure everything was cleaned up properly. Our street sweeper, uh, actually, uh, had a, is in the process of being repaired. So we're a couple of weeks behind on our street sweep sweeping schedule this year. But, uh, we got the last part ordered. It should be in hopefully either early next week or by the end of the week. And then we'll be beginning our our sweeping rotations. So.
Okay, so that sounds like it would be near the first of May. That can tell people when they.
Yes, yes, we should. We should be up and running before the first of May. Um, but but that that that's probably a safe date.
Okay, all right. And the people that were had mentioned limbs were other than people on on, uh, Middle Drive, but also, um, there, where was I today? And I didn't, I've been trying to, what I've encountered really bad potholes. I tried to text up to you because it was like I was right there. But I, there was a spot today that, and I'm trying to remember where I was, that was really, uh, really pretty bad. Um, but I will try, I'm sure I'll probably go on some around the same way tomorrow or so and I'll get back with you. But, um, I would like to say that basically, um, I've been seeing, you know, the, say that your department's been doing a good job. It's on the, at least when I reported, uh, and I only report the ones that are really pretty bad. So, but you've been doing a good job of getting them taken care of. So and I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, uh, because I've heard lots about potholes and I keep trying to remind people, you know, well, it's not just here in the city that we have potholes. It's all over. No, thank you. Uh, Mr. Morgan, I am sorry. I didn't see you, not seeing you on the screen. Did you have any council proposed business? Is he still there?
No, he's gone.
He's gone. Okay, thank you. Uh, okay, and the city manager is away and we do offer our condolences and safe travel to her as she is traveling for, um, the funeral of a family member. Okay. Uh, communications, the budget first reading is made tense at six, so we can prepare ourselves for that. So any other public comment? We have no one here in the chamber, but is there anyone online?
If anyone on the attendees list would like to make comment, please raise your hand. You have three minutes to address council. Erica Vany. Allow you to speak now. Erica, you have three minutes to address council. We are unable.
Good evening. Sorry about that. Um, my name is Erica Vany. I'm the founding chairwoman for the National Congress of Black Women here in Washtenaw County. And, uh, this evening, um, I wanted to share a little bit of information that I have for you guys regarding a a project with relief and the DTE, my green power, uh, program. And the program is they need at least twelve hundred residents, uh, in Washtenaw County to sign up for the program so they can plant at least twenty trees here. And I nominated the city of Ibsalani. So, um, I'm just waiting to hear back, uh, to iron out the rest of these cells and I'll be able to get back with council.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, any, um, anyone else?
Um, there are no other hands raised.
All right, thank you. Okay, seeing now, uh, someone has the magic.
I didn't, I mean, um, reservation for number twenty-two, that's there and I'm there. About the council, city council meeting adjourned, um, called by the mayor of the North Council.
So.
It's been moved and supported that the be adjourned. All those in favor?
All right.
May. Who said may?
You got another hour of work to do.
It only takes, it takes the mayor and three, so I guess.
Hungry.
It says.
I barely ate them because I was worried about talking.